Good evening.
Recording in progress.
To the Oceanside Planning Commission for Monday, November 6th. If I could get everybody to rise for the pledge. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. City Planner, can you do a roll call, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony.
Present.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
Commissioner Ogden.
Present.
And Commissioner Malik.
Present.
Please let the record show that all Commissioners are present. We have a call.
Thank you. Do we have any slips for communications on not on tonight's agenda?
Chair Rosales, we do not.
Okay. Then we will go to approval minutes from our last meeting, which was October 23rd. Any discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Approve Commissioner Malik and second by Commissioner Balma's vote. Yeah.
Let the record show that the motion passes 6-0 with Commissioner Dodds abstaining.
Thank you. We have nothing listed tonight on our agenda under consent calendar, nothing under transportation items, and we have, one, we have an amended agenda tonight, so we're not hearing, public hearing, item number four, as the applicant has pulled their project for consideration, which leaves us with item five. I believe item six is being continued. Is that correct, City Planner, to a later date?
Commissioner Rosales, that's correct. That item was continued in the revised agenda to the meeting of November 20th.
November 20th. Okay, great. So we have a single item tonight, and that is item five, consideration of a local coastal plan amendment. Applicant is the city of Oceanside. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Rosales and members of the Planning Commission. My name's Leilani Heinz. I think maybe I've seen you once or twice here at the Planning Commission. I'm bringing forward to you amendments to Chapter 14(c) of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance of the City's Code. So one of our premier policy tools for affordable housing production is inclusionary housing, and more than 170 jurisdictions currently in California have an inclusionary housing program as a component of their overall housing production strategy.
Leilani?
Yeah, sure.
I'm going to interrupt you because I'm sorry, I forgot to do disclosures.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So we need to do disclosures before you continue. My disclosures, I read the staff report, and I see that we have at least one email on our dais here in front of us. Vice Chair Morrissey.
I read the staff report and read the email.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodds.
Read the staff report and read the email.
Commissioner Balma.
Same.
Commissioner Ogden.
Ditto.
Commissioner Malik.
Ditto.
And Commissioner Anthony.
Staff report and the email.
Great, thank you. Sorry, Leilani, for that interruption.
No, no problem. Thank you. So the policy, again, was adopted in 1983, so it's been a longstanding program for the city of Oceanside, and it's one of our ways to meet the housing needs of our low and moderate income households. Under the city code, it establishes affordable housing obligations for any residential project of three or more units, so a low threshold rate there. It requires developers to rent or sell 10% of their overall housing units at restricted rents or prices, affordable to low-income, for rental housing, or low or moderate for our for-sale products. And then units are restricted for 55 years. It's pretty consistent with other affordable housing or inclusionary housing ordinances throughout the county of San Diego. There's been a lot that has taken place related to amending this ordinance. I think you all saw in 2020 that first phase of updates in December 2022, which was not too long ago. Council did adopt revisions to the ordinance, and those revisions were, in summary, we kept things pretty much status quo. What we did do was align our definitions more in line with state code and state density bonus law. We looked at, made sure we had all those compliance alternatives that were required under state law, and we bumped up our in-loofe from $8.92 a square foot to $20 a square foot. That fee was phased over a two-year period. For the first year, $15 a square foot, and then kicking in in January 2024, it would go up to $20 a square foot. And then a big change was then an annual adjustment of that pricing by the California Construction Cost Index. And then, obviously, any of, any project that had come forward under SB 330 was grandfathered in. Any projects that were deemed complete by December were grandfathered in. So all these new requirements kick in for any new residential projects, and would also, if this is approved tonight, and that you recommend council adopt, the same would go. Any projects that are already in process would not be obligated to meet the new requirements if they are adopted by council. Almost right away, after December, there was talk amongst the public, talk amongst several council members, our housing commission, about why didn't we raise it above the 10%. And so in June 2023, we had a couple of council members, direct staff, to raise the current 10% set aside requirement to 20% set aside. Little bit of discussion at council, and then it was decided that, you know, that discussion really ought to take place at the August 30th scheduled council workshop. And so we did do that, and at that point in time, council provided staff direction to prepare amendments to Chapter 14(c) that would increase the requirement from 10% to 15%, with the exception of single-family neighborhoods. Also, to clarify the use of ADUs as a compliance alternative, that's already in the ordinance, but I think there was just a little bit of clarity there. And then I think, as part of discussions council has had on projects, that this need to affirmatively further fair housing came up as well. And so those are the three major amendments that we're talking about tonight. Raising it up to 15% addresses what we have heard from the community and others about meeting RENA and trying to get that number up. Not sure that we're ever going to really meet RENA, but it'll make a small dent into that, and that we have a need for affordable housing for very low-income and low-income households. They make a good percentage of our households here in Oceanside. These households are paying more than 50% and sometimes 30%, more than 30% of their income towards housing costs. So we have a demonstrated need when you look at our demographics. And then leveraging density bonus with inclusionary housing, looking at that for our single-family neighborhoods, making sure that, you know, when they're being leveraged with density bonus, that does have an impact and increased densities in those areas. So to protect the single-family neighborhoods, there was a request to keep the 10% in those areas. The affirmatively furthering fair housing is to ensure that these units become inclusive within the project themselves and provide equal access. So you hear at times the question, will the lower-income households have the opportunity to have the same amenities be distributed throughout the project? That is something within the density bonus ordinance already, proportionality. So we're including that within the inclusionary housing ordinance as well, that when people are providing those affordable units onsite and mixed with market rate, that they be proportionately mixed, dispersed throughout, and access to all the same amenities. No one is excluded. And then the clarification of ADUs, it's merely moving a section of the code from off-site alternatives into the onsite alternatives, so it's really clear that ADUs can be used as a compliance alternative. So say, for example, someone's doing a single-family development, it may make sense for them to do an ADU as that inclusionary unit versus making that one four-bedroom, five-bedroom, single-family home the inclusionary unit. So that's being offered, or that is currently offered, as an alternative compliance methodology. We're just clarifying that a little bit. And so with that, staff's recommending tonight that the Planning Commission recommends city council introduce an ordinance to amend 14(c), adopt a resolution establishing the amended text as part of the local coastal program to incorporate the revisions you have as attachment to of your staff report this evening. So staff's available at this time to answer any questions that you might have on this agenda topic.
Okay. Thank you, Leilani. We'll start with Commissioner Balma.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. I hope I could follow it all. You probably said this all, and I probably didn't hear it, but for me, like, I'm just thinking about, if I was going to go out and build a, you know, little condo project, and I wanted to build four units, I got to reserve 10% for inclusionary housing. That's not possible because I only have four units, not even 10%. So you'd have to pay the inclusionary fee, which might be maybe $48,000. So have you been collecting lots of fees for these smaller projects then? Because I'm sure they're not going to build.
Those are typically the projects that will pay the fee.
Right.
Those that take advantage, and there have been some smaller projects that are taking advantage of the density bonus and marriage and marrying those two together, may opt to do that because there can be some incentives and some waivers there that make sense for them to do, and that might mean that they're providing more than 10%. But yes, you're absolutely correct. That's one of the reasons why you want to have that in-loofe.
So you wanted to do that just to be able to collect those fees? And so what's been happening with the fees? Have you guys gotten, just put it into an account that's going to hopefully buy another Mission Cove or whatever else the city can build?
Exactly. So when we presented at August, on August 30th, we presented information that we've got about $10 million in the kitty. That sounds like a lot, but what we also presented to you is that it takes about $600,000 a door to produce affordable housing. So $600,000 a door doesn't go very far to produce affordable housing. We do act as a gap financer, so we're not providing the full $600,000, but typically our subsidy costs for affordable housing can be anywhere in the range of $180,000 to $200,000.
That's why it gets it so much, to build a
Yeah.
small apartment or a condo?
Exactly.
$600,000. That seems kind of crazy. Why then, like, I mean, to me, it seems kind, I guess it's just all about getting the fees then, because to me, it's like, if you're going to raise it to 20%, then you should say it's building so many units if it's 20 units, and, well, actually, it'd be like less than that, I think, at 20%. I'm not a math person. But even still, it would make sense, because then you'd be building whatever amount of units, and we reserve one for affordable housing. It all makes sense. But you're just trying to get the smaller guy, the smaller developer, to just pay into the fee thing, is what it's all about.
Yeah, and there was, there was also some discussion at council about raising that threshold from three ADUs to 10 ADUs. There was also a lot of discussion at council
Yeah.
about the need to relook at our NEXIS study. So inclusionary housing, when you start to get into more restrictive requirements, the state actually looks at inclusionary housing as a barrier to overall housing production. Density bonus is the favored child. Inclusionary is kind of, well, a lot of people do it, we'll take it. But the more and more you are restrictive, the state feels that that's a barrier to overall housing production, not just affordable housing, but housing production. So it does require that you do this NEXIS study if you're starting to go into the 20% range. So what was discussed at councils, if we start to tinker with this a little bit more and a little bit more, like raising the threshold, increasing the set aside, we felt as staff that we really then needed to go back to the study. So much had happened. We conducted that study in 2021, probably using closer to 2020 economic factors and information and data, that we felt like if we really started to tinker with it, that we should be doing that study to see what the true impact is on cost of production and feasibility of projects. So we would do that if we looked at anything further than the 15% requirement. The law also requires that you have a number of alternatives, so that it can account for smaller projects, that maybe they don't want to do that, they can't do that .5 unit, so let's get a fee. So by law, we have to provide for all different compliance methods, whether it's paying a fee, maybe partnering with a tax credit developer, an affordable housing developer, and paying them to do the unit, doing rehab units, any which way that we can see housing opportunities increase. So all of that is laid out in the current ordinance.
I'm not against inclusionary housing or any of that. I just think that if a guy decides he wants to kind of go out there and try to become a developer and wants to build his first little condo project, he's going to get slapped with another 40, 50, $60,000, you know, fee to add to his budget.
Exactly.
To me, it just seems like that's harsh.
Yes.
When it's a bigger project, I have no qualms at all about what you guys have proposed, but to me, like, I'm, you know, I'm not a big-time guy. I don't know. You're a developer.
And that was the discussion, that was at the heart of the discussion in December when we brought the in-loofe forward. There was a lot of criticism of staff because our consultant did suggest and recommend a $25 a square foot, and as staff, we rolled that back to $15 a square foot.
That's good.
We didn't feel comfortable, given when you look at, when you start to aggregate all the cost of development, impact fees, cost of construction going up, labor costs, now we're hearing about insurance costs, you start to pile these things in aggregate, there is an economic impact. And hence why we also stated that, again, if we're going to tinker with this ordinance again beyond the 15%, we really need to do that economic analysis to ensure that we aren't putting more and more barriers locally to housing production, whether it's market rate or affordable.
I agree, I agree with your guys' logic. I would have actually tried to raise that a little bit higher on your, you know, the four units, you know, it's kind of small. So, I mean, it doesn't make sense to me, four units, and you got to do 10%. Just, it's just a way to collect fees, is all it is, to me. Okay, that's it. I'm done.
Leilani, a point of clarification, the $20 per square foot fee is indexed, correct? So it'll
It's indexed.
It'll go up and attach to that index
It will.
over time?
It will, yes. So it's 15, it's $15 now, January 1st, 2024, picks up to 20, and then the next year, that $20 will be indexed on the construction index.
Thank you. Commissioner Malik.
A question about the ADUs. Just have to figure out how that works. I'm looking at the rent control. Well, the ADU is 80,87, I think, or 60,000. And then 20% and 60%. So that's 1,200 bucks a month for ADUs. Costs of ADUs probably between $150,000 and $200,000 just to pay that back as a balance, anywhere from 12 to 14 years. So where's the incentive? Is that, I guess, that links to whomever buys that property or if it is located? So they're basically burdened with a requirement to hold the rent at that rate or increment or whatever the median is, it's going to be probably, it's not going to be that, it's going to, it's going to go up, but still, it's a very minimal amount to, there's no incentive there. I don't see that, other than checking the box and you've created more affordable housing. So I understand where we're trying to get, and I also understand the fact that the ADU is a lot, it's a game of 100 per, this year. But those don't count for that.
So Commissioner Malik, what is being presented tonight is a clarification of the existing inclusionary housing ordinance. The ADU provision will only apply to a new residential development. So recently, this commission has seen a couple single-family developments that utilize density bonus to increase the amount of units that can be provided on each of those two particular sites. One of the things that staff struggles with the most is, one of those units, each, each one of these instances, those units were reserved for very low-income households. There's nothing in the state density bonus law that precludes an applicant from utilizing that income category to reserve the necessary units within the project to qualify for a density bonus project. What staff is finding problematic is that those, those single-family homes that are set aside as part of the inclusionary, or not, shouldn't say inclusionary housing requirement, rather, the income-restricted units associated with the density bonus application is, they cannot be sold to a very low-income household because a very low-income household cannot qualify for a mortgage because they only make 50% of AMI. And so as an alternative to that conundrum, what staff is clarifying within the existing ordinance is that those projects, those homes could include an ADU, which could be considered the affordable unit within that project. Excuse me?
It would still be a rental.
It would still be a rental unit, but it would be, it would be income-restricted for a period of 55 years, and would be, the primary responsibility of the maintenance of that unit wouldn't fall to a person in the very low-income category. It would fall to the primary homeowner. Presumably, they would get a discount from the developer
The salesperson.
of that, of that project to carry that unit for that many years.
Yeah, it's, it's just
I understand the number that you guys are in. It's just, it's, it's a challenging thing. I'm just trying to figure out how that works.
Yeah, and so it would be the developers, it's the developer's choice of taking, so I think one of our products has a unit that's a four-bedroom, single-family detached home that they now need to make affordable to a very low-income household. The pricing, the pricing on that, based upon the state definition, can be anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000 sales price. That's a heck of a deal for a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling unit. I don't know of any community that has that in Southern California outside of inclusionary. But for a very low-income household, the ability to even qualify for a $200,000 home is really difficult. I mean, if you have two cars that you're making loan payments on, you've got some credit card debt, you'll never be able, I mean, it's, it'll be difficult to make front and back-end ratios for a mortgage. So in those cases, you know, is it more prudent for a developer to do that four-bedroom, single-family detached for a very low-income household, or maybe discount a four-bedroom, single-family detached home to a mark, to a homeowner, discount that pricing, but build an ADU attached to it that that homeowner could make available for rental to a very low-income? So that's kind of the alternative scenario in which we see that happening.
Thank you very much. One last question on that, then. Is the homeowner that purchases that home with the ADU attached required in any way to rent that to a low-income family?
Yes, there would be a deed restriction on the property that they would be
Does he have to rent the property?
It would be deed restricted, and we would be monitoring them.
So you shall rent that to
You shall rent it out.
Wow. Okay. Another disincentive. Thank you.
Vice Chair Morrissey, go ahead.
So, thanks.
Give us some numbers. Give us a number on what it's like to build an ADU.
Well, by the way, ADUs probably are now, I just heard somebody's, I just talked with somebody, his ADU in Del Mar is going to cost him $700,000 for a 1,200-square-foot ADU.
A cheap one is maybe three.
I was assuming about 200K for an ADU.
No, it's going to be more.
That's low. It is. Three to four. ADUs, yeah, like everything else. It seems like what we're talking about is almost, you know, dealing with the symptoms rather than the cause. And I, so my question, if you know Leilani, is how many units, new construction units are being held up in Oceanside because of law, SEQA lawsuits?
I would leave that to my planning colleague. A lot.
So Vice Chair Morrissey, fortunately, the SEQA litigation to two major projects that this body reviewed last year, one of which you acted as the final acting body, the other one was just the recommending body. My understanding is both those lawsuits have been cleared now. So it took about a year, but there was settlements in both, in both cases, so.
Those two projects, how many units were they?
1,100 between both.
Okay, so 1,100, just in our city of Oceanside. So you take the state of California, maybe it's a million houses? So I just hope that our state would look at SEQA
Yeah.
and that's dealing with the problem. That's what's dealing with the reason why housing is so expensive, and then the impact fees. Those, those are the issues that our state needs to deal with, and I just want to bring that up so that we can get that out, so when we vote for people, that we vote, vote that in.
And there actually is, I think, new legislation now that will kick in in January related to SEQA lawsuits and where, and I can't remember what the criteria is, but where, where they're, where it's clear that even though you may file a lawsuit, that in the end, that it will not be upheld, that there's some language in there about that lawsuit being called off. And I can't recall specifically, but there is, there's, there's starting to be some tinkering of SEQA.
Well, when SEQA was first signed by Reagan in 1980, it had nothing to do with housing. So somehow, they, somebody snuck that in, and that's why we can't get anything built here, and that's why I think, that's the main reason, that and impact fees. We need reform on, you know, it's crazy in the Bay Area, you pay, a multifamily development may pay $200,000 per unit on maybe 200 units. Well, that gets pretty expensive. So that's what we need to reform in our state.
Development.
Extortion fees.
Commissioner Ogden, go ahead.
I have a quick question. This may have been asked and answered, but how do these fees, the impact fees, compare to coastal North San Diego County?
So I'm not entirely sure if, do you have the BIA numbers? I mean, the development impacts fees can constitute up to 20% or even more of total development costs. They're substantial, and so we're sensitive to that. In the coastal area, it would be quite more, but I'm not, and I think our city of Oceanside might be at the higher end of those impact fees when you look countywide.
Commissioner Ogden, what I would add is, I'm not sure how we compare, quite frankly. I can tell you that the inclusionary housing fee was updated last year
Yeah.
and the staff recommended the council adopt a fee much lower than, we had a NEXIS study that showed we could have charged a much higher number.
So you're asking specifically about the in-loofe and its comparison to coastal?
Is that why the commission asked for that change?
The commission didn't ask for that change. That was a staff recommendation
It was a higher number.
to do a lower number than what we could have asked for. That was a staff recommendation.
Yes. That in-loofe ranges anywhere from $30 a square foot when you look at, like, a Del Mar Solana Beach. Carlsbad did 15, and so we felt that 15 was probably a good number that got us enough, but wasn't so punitive, if you will, to disincentives.
Yeah. Okay, just asking.
Because the recommended number that came out initially was, came from a study, right?
It came from a study. Actually, the number was higher
Yeah, I remember that.
upwards of the $30, $40, and then the consultant recommended 25.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Okay. Any other questions for staff? I don't see anybody in the audience, so this is a public hearing, but don't see anybody that, I'll ask, though. Any slips?
Chair Rosales, no, we do not tonight.
So we'll close the public hearing. We're being asked to, what's the exact action? Recommend to the council to introduce the ordinance for the amended Chapter 14(c) elements that are outlined, or were outlined by Leilani, but also outlined in the staff report. So any other questions for staff? Thank you, Leilani, for that presentation. Or do we want to go to a motion? I'm looking to my left, to my right, and my screen. I don't see anything lit up. Commissioner Malik, it looks
Commissioner Malik, it looks like you're stewing it over. Oh, there you go. Commissioner Malik is in. Go ahead.
I'm just trying to figure out which part of this I'm supposed to read because there's a fair amount.
Yeah, you can, you can just make it simple. Recommend, recommended action.
Recommend that we vote to, to submit the revisions to the inclusionary housing ordinance, Chapter 14(c) of the city code as set forth in the recommendation by the planning department.
Great. That'll suffice as a motion. Second, anybody?
I'll second.
Commissioner Dodds, thank you for that second. Any further discussion? It looks like we have a, go ahead.
If I don't cough, I'm going to not be in support of this because I think that what you need to do is you have to change the way the thresholds are, like three or more units is just trying to get more money out of the developer. I'm not into that. I think it's hard enough as it is right now in this day and age. I think that if you do it to maybe 15 units or more, then everybody will be caught in the 15%. And I think that's cool, but, so I'm not going to be voting in support of this.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment, but I think Leilani did indicate that these are, these are progressive steps that we're making. We keep, I think the term you used was tweaking, tweaking these amendments. I think we'll see these come back to us again at some point with some additional revisions, but I appreciate that, that comment, Commissioner Bauma. That being said, let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes 5-2 with Commissioners Bauma and Ogden voting no.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda. Again, item six is being continued to November 20th, I believe. Appeal of city planner determination, don't see anything. And that'll leave us with discussion items, excuse me, commissioner reports. Leilani, I was going to, in my report, try to mention that I read over the weekend a couple of housing bills by Alvarez, David Alvarez, yeah. One having to do, the one that I found interesting was to try to, and this may be already in place or if it was being proposed, and that was to try to not only do density bonus for low income.
The moderate.
But then starting to, you know, have, I'll call it set-asides, but development that also included, call them middle-income demographic, if you will. The caveat being that, so you have a development that had density bonus, and you had three or four set aside for that. That had to happen first before you could then build in the middle income as well. So it's like one, one follows the other, which I think will be a challenge to try to set aside so much housing for lower incomes as opposed to going right to a development that had middle-income restrictions. You know, I think, I think we weren't quite there yet. Maybe a subsequent bill will, you know, go there first as opposed to the lower income. I don't know if I got that completely right, but, Leilani?
Yeah, that was a bill passed by Alvarez, and it's, and it's patterned, actually, after the city of San Diego. The city of San Diego has been very innovative in the density bonus arena and has been setting the stage for what the state has been doing in terms of incorporating into density bonus law. And it is exactly, as you talked about, it's a stacked density bonus. So you meet the maximum density bonus under law, and you do a little bit more, you get a lot more. So one of the examples was the very low income that's always talked about, that if you hit that max of very low income and give a little bit more, you can go upwards to, I forget if it's an 86% or 89% density bonus increase. So it's, it's very generous, and it raises the incentives for four to five incentives on some of these products. So the city of San Diego is just leading the way in terms of density bonus law. So a city to watch out for in terms of housing legislation and what's happening there.
Yeah, and Alvarez is a former city council member from San Diego.
Absolutely.
So anyways, I read that, I thought that was very interesting. We'll kind of keep an eye on, see how that goes. That's it for my report. Vice Chair Morrison?
Two things. One is that I went up to Miracosta College, and Balfour Beatty is building three buildings for Miracosta College. I guess that was something that was passed in 2016. And it's a gymnasium, and then I guess two health buildings. And it's really amazing what they're building up there. I don't know if anybody's been up there lately, but it's major construction up there. Swinburne, Balfour Beatty, Level 10, Kitchell, it's, that campus is on fire. So wanted this to let you know that if you haven't been up to Miracosta, you should take a drive up. And secondly, I would like to show Oceanside Sponsored Club that's, we're, we're helping out. It's, it's a club called Oceanside's Finest Basketball Club, and it's one that I sent out to the planning commissioners invited. But it's basically, it's a club that helps kids, boys and girls ages up. Competitive sport and at no cost. And what's great about it is that it helps the kids to learn a competitive sport, to learn, hard work pays off in the way of they can see their skills improve. And a lot of the kids go on to play high school, college, and some pro ball players. So with that, here's a quick video of this event. It's going to be November 16.
It's really nice having a couple of days a week, not just once, but three times a week, allowing them to be able to develop, not only in basketball, but also in discipline as far as Coach Don and the other coaches, just worrying more about the player, not...
Testimonials from the parents whose kids play. And just a quick note that Donald Yosokuchi is the coach, he's been doing it for over 25 years at no cost. And these, there's free practices a week, two practices are skills practices, and then one is a practice to get them prepped for a game. And it's an amazing club. And so, and I will say, I'm so proud of the city. The city has helped the club and the grant, and so has the county. And so kudos to the city and the coaching staff and, and the kids are the benefactors. And so it's a great thing that the city's doing. So that's my report.
That's great.
Very good report. And the reminder, the fundraiser is November 16.
It's November 16. Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Bauma?
I have no report, and I don't want to follow that anyway. But we did have our Surf Museum Gala, and we did raise a lot of money, and the city also supports us, too, and we did it. So thank you, everybody who came. The Toms came.
That's a, a big understatement. They had the Surf Museum Gala on Saturday, and Louise was the, the live auction emcee, and she did an amazing job. And she's right, the fundraising was phenomenal. The whole event was phenomenal. My first time there, and it was just a really, really cool show. So kudos to, for Commissioner Bauma for being involved in that. Commissioner Anthony, any report?
No report.
Commissioner Dodds?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Malik?
Friday, this Friday, 10 November marks the 248th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. So.
All right.
It's a family holiday, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. And the following day is Veterans Day, formerly known as Armistice Day. And it's a day to celebrate those who gave everything for, for the freedoms that we have today. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. Commissioner Ogden?
I'm too new to make any reports, but I will add one thing. And with all, for the sake of transparency, Tom Morrison and I are both on the Board of Directors for Oceanside's Finest. And if you'd ever spend 15 minutes watching one of their practices, you'd be amazed at what Donald has done and with that group. There are disadvantaged kids, there are economically challenged kids, single parents, many of them are, but they've done a phenomenal job. And if they're not doing that, they're going to be out doing other things, and it's a phenomenal program. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for, both of you for being so involved in that, too. Great program. City Planner?
Thank you, Chairman Rosales. Just going to go over a few upcoming items for the planning commission, some planning-related items going to city council. At your meeting on November 20th, the planning commission will be asked to consider a development plan for public improvements associated with the Loma Alta Creek Restoration Project. They're at Loma Alta Creek and the railroad. From coast, it goes from Coast Highway to the railroad. Also on that agenda, there'll be a regular coastal permit for a new single-family residence at 116 Eaton Street, just right outside of St. Malo Gates in the coastal zone. And also that meeting, staff will bring forward the revisions to the short-term rental ordinance update to implement city council direction of no new short-term rentals outside of the coastal zone. At the meeting of December 4th, we have no scheduled items currently, so that meeting may be canceled. And then on the meeting for December 18th, there is a conditional use permit and development plan for a new Fire Station 8 in Ocean Ranch, generally across the street to the east of the Kaiser facility there in Ocean Ranch. City's proposing a new fire station there. And also on that date, we'll be bringing forward the revisions to the conditional use permit for the Brother Benno's project. And finally, I'll do my best to give a legislative update on that day. The governor did sign 56 bills that affect housing, so it's pretty thick. And trying to get through it and understand it and be able to decipher it and explain it to the planning commission is a challenge, but I'll do my best. And then moving on to city council, at the meeting, there's no items scheduled for the next meeting on November 15th. On the meeting of December 6th, the city council will be asked to consider the appeal of the Avocado Road project that the commission considered a month or two ago. On the meeting of December 20th, the Pacifica project that this council made, or this commission made a recommendation on will be considered by the city council. And finally, moving out to the first meeting in 2024 on January 10th, the appeal of the Loma Alta Terrace's project will be considered by the city council. That's all I have for my update. Thank you.
Lots coming up. Thank you for that. Okay, we have nothing else on the agenda, so we're adjourned.